Hi.
Hi.
I remembered to enable the waiting room for once.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Oh, I remembered to enable the waiting room for once. Is my connection not good?
Uh, there's a, an echo, but you know, it's loud. You know, when you're my age, the hearing is about the forty-third thing that you lose.
I know, but I wonder if it's my internet.
Nope, it sounds strong.
Okay, alright. It was being kind of weird.
Back, back up, back up a foot and see if that, maybe you're too close.
Okay.
Oh, that's much better. Yeah.
I'm gonna try and keep us on schedule tonight because the last meeting was so long.
Yes, it was. Especially for a guy like me, I was here from seven o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
But we got a lot done.
Yeah.
Hey, Michelle.
Hey Gina, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good. Is it just us?
Um, so far.
No.
I enabled the waiting room.
Oh, good. You'll be, you'll be coming on a pro at Zoom, but.
Zoom.
Yeah. Maybe for, not for much longer. I'm afraid my computer is gonna die. Some on my phone.
Oh, alright.
Gina, when you did the minutes, did you only just send them to Tony or in yourself? Like, I'm not sure whom I'm supposed to send them to, like, for the executive session and for...
Yeah, that would be fine, but then they get forwarded to the whole group for approval.
So. Michelle, you, you can just send them to me and Chris and Regina if you want. And then we will put, I'll put the regular meeting in the next packet. And the executive minutes, I will put in the next executive packet. There could be a delay. I mean, we've been having executive sessions regularly, but after tonight, we may not have one for two months.
Months, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever you want.
So I'm trying to get my, my computer is just.
James, you wanna come over here and say hello to the school committee? Come on. This is James Parerico, our evening custodian.
Yay.
Hey Beth.
Hey, everybody. Hey Jane.
You're the new recruits, huh? James is the mystery man.
Yeah, right, the man behind the mask.
I love it. That's great. Thank you for all your service.
Nice to meet you or see you.
Hey, Ms. Anderson.
Hello, Ms. Anderson.
Hi Beth.
I didn't know your name before.
Beth, thank you for being sensitive the other morning, recognizing the fact that I did not recognize you with your mask on.
No, I, I go through that all the time. Are you kidding me? I saw, I think I saw Michelle and I didn't recognize her and now I do. You know, even being on, even, even zooming full face is different than like being in person, you know, um, full face. So the mask just adds it.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing how different people can look, two-dimensional and three-dimensional.
Hmm, totally.
I was walking in Boston, I was walking in Boston and I saw, uh, Booch, Tom Brady's wife.
Giselle.
Giselle Boochman. And I have absolutely, the person I was with was, there's, I had no idea. She looked nothing. And I guess that, that's what makes a model, you know, I mean, some, like, I, I don't look any different. I don't look any better two-dimensionally. Some people look really good.
Yeah.
Well, I, I know that's what you were thinking, Tony, when I took the mask down. You were like, oh, you do look like a supermodel.
That's right, exactly.
In person, you know, like.
I was.
We were stunned.
I was actually gonna call the police. I, I thought, you know, you may have been lost.
Right, I belong in New York City.
That's right, you're looking for Fifth Avenue, right.
You know, it's, we're on the same page now.
Because we have a quorum, I think I'm just gonna call the meeting to order. Um, oh, here's Lauren. I wasn't sure if Lauren was gonna be able to join. She said she wasn't feeling well earlier.
Oh, no.
Hi Lauren.
Hey Lauren.
Alright, so I'm, I'm gonna let other folks in. I'm gonna try and keep the meeting moving along today, so it's not quite as long as last. I know we had a lot on the agenda for last week, but just, you know, for efficiency sake, I'll try and move it along, um, today. So I'm gonna let.
I can take a hit, Madam Chair.
My rule of thumb is nothing over an hour.
Yes. Alright.
Wow. Getting executive session.
Progress. Oh, no.
Um, so I'm gonna call the meeting of, the school committee meeting of June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one to order at seven oh four, if we can all rise and say the allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the United States, the citizens of America.
Bernie and Justice for all.
Um, if we can, any discussion regarding the minutes from our regular meeting on June eighth of two thousand twenty-one?
No.
If there's no discussion, can I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the regular school committee meeting on June eighth, two thousand twenty-one?
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from June eighth of two thousand twenty-one.
Can I have a second to that motion, please?
I'll second that motion made by Ms. Karas.
Thanks, Ms. Anderson. All in favor of approving the minutes, by show of hands, Ms. Dan, Ms. Karas, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Sherlock and myself. Mr. Parentazi, if you wanna take over and review the bills to be paid tonight?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. The total this month is forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty cents. Typical costs, some food, some educational materials, special education, speech therapy. We did have a rather large bill for fixing our elevator, uh, there, and for our alarm system. Twenty-eight hundred hours of, obviously, not an discretionary expenditure that we need both. So, Madam Chair, with your permission, I would respectfully request you ask for a motion of forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty cents for the invoices of six twenty-two, twenty-one.
Any discussion regarding the bills that are due to be paid tonight?
None for me.
No. I'd happily make a motion to approve forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty cents, um, for the invoices for approval on the meeting held today, six twenty-two.
Thank you, Ms. Karas. Can I have a second to the motion?
Second, the motion made by Ms. Karas.
Oh.
The expenditures, sorry.
Anderson, yep.
Ms. Anderson, all in favor of approving the bills as passed, did? Ms. Anderson, Ms. Karas, Ms. Dan, Ms. Sherlock and myself, motion varies. Um, and Mr. Parentazi, would you like to move on to, um, old business, the COVID-nineteen update?
Yes, Madam Chair, for the last time, hopefully ever, ever, I'm going to make a report on COVID-nineteen. Hopefully in September, we are beyond this. Everything's great, no cases, no quarantines, no close contacts. We made it through the school year with the support of our parents, guardians and staff, and of course, our, the cooperation of our, our students. In your packet, I put the vaccination data of June seventeenth, eighty-two percent of all residents in the Hahn have received their first dose, and seventy-five percent are fully vaccinated. Uh, and I also put in your packet, the commissioner's memo of Saturday night, uh, which basically says, for summer programs, maintaining the health and safety guidance is not required, but encouraged. I have communicated with public health nurse, she recommends that we do not have our students in masks this summer. But we have our sta, our staff in masks, um, indoors only.
Even if they're vaccinated?
Uh, yep. Because of the, because of the variants, because of, uh, Delta, I believe is the one.
Just to be clear, the vaccines are still effective against the Delta variant. There's no change. So, um, you know, the infectious disease community has been encouraging us to treat COVID as COVID, whether it's Delta or not. It's just a question of the transmissibility and severity, but vaccination protection is the same.
I respect, I, I will respectfully defer to the medical people on the committee. Do you think it's not necessary for adults indoors either?
Well, if I were gonna be choosing who to keep masked, I'd be keeping masked, unvaccinated children if I were, if I were to contact anyone, not vaccinated adults, but, but that's totally an if.
So no masks?
I mean, I'm happy to have this, you know, to go back to the public health nurse and just have a better conversation if needed. I don't wanna override. She could have very good reasons that, you know, we're not privy to, but, um, I would think it'd be worthy of further investigation.
Okay. What I will do is say that we're not requiring it, and of course, anyone who feels like they need to wear one or want to wear one, may.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Uh, and then the, the big news, of course, on this memo is the fall. At this time, all health and safety guidance, including masking and physically distancing, is lifted.
Yeah, great.
Can I just, um, say, just ask one quick question of, and what a great, what a great boon it is to have nursing power and science power on this committee. But would it be wise to also just add the qualifier that if you have not been vaccinated as an adult, you should, you should wear a mask, knowing that we can enforce that, but we'll put that out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think masking is encouraged, particularly indoors for unvaccinated adults.
Yeah, it's the guidance, but like you said, Beth, completely unenforceable.
Yeah, right.
Right.
And we're talking indoors only.
Right.
Just, just to make sure we're talking about the same thing. So if we have a, in the summer program, we're gonna have people who are not on our staff, so we'll, we'll ask if they have been vaccinated. As you all know, I can't mandate that information, but I can ask.
Are you comfortable sharing?
Yeah.
Okay. Terrific. Madam Chair, I'll go right to the Public Library Partnership. I sent you an email from the Public Library Director. The Library Board of Trustees met on the sixteenth of June and they decided not to accept our partnership at this time. So, uh, we will have a, a paraprofessional in the library one day a week, uh, meeting with our children. She also indicates that perhaps in January, uh, I'm gonna have to talk to the, the union and also Mr. Andrews about whether or not doing something in January makes sense to us in the, in the middle of the year. Okay?
Okay.
The fiscal twenty-one budget update is about as good as the COVID-nineteen. We will be returning to the town of Nahal a significant amount of money for the reserve fund. It actually is due to a confluence of factors, all of which broke our way this year. Number one, we had a special education tuition that was eliminated, um, one that ended in the middle of the year, one that we had planned on starting in September that didn't begin till later in the year. We had parents choose not to take advantage of special education transportation and actually transport their own children, which is obviously their choice. We had retirements and therefore we had breakage between the salary of the retiree and the salary of the replacement. We had federal funds that we were able to replace our local funds with. And remote learning for the, um, about forty percent of the year. Last year was a factor, and this year, of course, we were here, but we had materials left over from the previous year when we didn't use them. So we were able to really be very cost efficient. So, um, I am working with the town accountant. We're probably going to encumber around seventy thousand dollars, and that includes a variety of things. We're gonna pre-buy some, um, materials, educational materials. We're going to get the rooftop unit repaired, et cetera, et cetera. I don't have that list for you tonight, but I will have it next night. Tonight, we, today, we spent all of our time on the transfers. And then the last item in this section is the Swam Scott MOA, and in your packet, of course, you have the fully endorsed MOA for your records, and you also have the email that I sent to everybody in North America, telling them that it was solved. And I reminded them that next year, this contract is not the contract in effect.
No, it's the following year.
Because I, I knew it would be confusing. You know, the superintendent sends a new contract out, so year one is year one, new. So this is in twenty-two, twenty-three. So, and I even put the, the amount in the budget in the email to make sure everybody was on the same page. I wanna thank the Chair for being available to sign all these documents. When we're in person, it'll be a lot easier down the road. And that's the old business, Madam Chair. I will quickly go right into my report. The, uh, summer activity. We're, we're beginning to work in the building. We're moving classrooms around and returning to our pre-COVID classroom arrangement with a couple of minor changes that the principal has facilitated. The hallways are already full of things and rooms are already being cleaned. Sign up for the accelerated Learning Academy are going slow. Uh, I think we have about ten students. Mr. Andrews, is that correct?
No, actually, I, I was able to send out a separate email on Saturday and we got another ten from that. So we have about, although some people said, signed up twice. So, uh, they were eager. I, I believe, I would, I would say the total's around eighteen.
Okay, and we have three staff, three people who are interested in those positions, two internal and one external, so we can take up to thirty-six.
That's what we thought was gonna be the limiting factor, was the staff, the staffing, so that's great.
No, it's not, yeah. There are, there are other programs, uh, down the road on the agenda that we are having difficulty with, which I'll bring to your attention. And then the thing is, the five C is the facility update. Our, our brick wall out by the Flash Road entry needs repair. We have concrete edges on some of our landings that needs repair, and last time I told you about the handicap ramp that will be repaired this summer. So those three things are really our three big facility issues this summer. In addition to, obviously, the rooftop unit, which, um, I'm still working on getting a price for. We had another company out, and this company doesn't think we need a whole new unit. They can just replace the controls inside and it would be dramatically less. So I'm encumbering the full cost, which is thirty-four thousand dollars plus two thousand dollars worth of electrical, and then, um, because I know that's the highest amount we'll spend. And then whatever we spend, whatever we, um, less than, will be less than that, and whatever we don't spend of the encumbrance, simply goes back to the town for reserve.
From the excess that's left over from last year's budget, that's, whereas the, the S R funding has to be directed in a certain area, we could sort of use that, you know, wherever it's needed. Is that correct?
No.
Oh.
What's correct is there's two bundles of money. In this town, the, the transportation funds, Essex and Essex funds and charter school funds, if they're not, if they're budgeted and not spent, that goes immediately to reserve funds. We have no access to it. All the other funds, which is about half of what we have left over, we can access during the year, but after Ju, uh, July fifteenth, that is reserved and we, we cannot touch it. We have to work off of the current year's budget. So that's why I'm encumbering about seventy thousand dollars of funds. And if I can get, um, cooperation from a facility, an external facility, I will prepay some special education fees too. And then there, it's not on the agenda, but I do want you to see, and I sent in the packet labeled five D, the enrollment estimate for next year. And, uh, it's basically where we ended up this year. I think it may be one or two students off, and you see the bubble coming through. We expect, and that's Mr. Andrews' note at the bottom there, we expect pre-K and K to increase, but we're not sure. So that, as of June seventeenth, that's the enrollment numbers for us. And that's, uh, oh, I have one more thing. The signs and lines grant of six thousand dollars, I believe ninety-five percent of the work is done in the community, around the school and elsewhere. And I wanna, once again, thank Dr. Soleimani for facilitating that for us. And that's it.
The numbers on the, uh, per class, that's indeed for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. It looks like the, the current, the incoming. It, it's very close. Anyway, it probably is, since it's more kids in the upcoming grade four than I thought that there were. That's great, so. You see it, Mr. Andrews? I'm sorry, you're muted. I'm sorry.
So the rising, you're saying the rise.
Third to fourth, and I'm just wondering if the, the currently listed grade three is actually this class here? Or if the, it's possible that grade two going into grade three is indeed that small?
Grade two going into the grade three is that small?
Yes, it is.
Grade four is gonna be sixteen? Wow, okay. That's good.
And, and obviously, these are transitional numbers. Like, we think our pre-K and K is low, and, um, we just don't know about the others. There's always ins and outs.
Right, there are always kids that could be doing something else next year and we don't know it yet, right?
Right.
Okay.
The first grade is thirty kids. Does that mean we're gonna have to get another first grade teacher? I know.
Yeah, there's two classes.
Yeah.
Yeah, what we've done, uh, through you, Madam Chair, is we had two kindergartens this year. We're rolling one of them into the first grade, so we will have one kindergarten planned and two first grades, and we'll continue that pattern as they bubble through, unless there, another grade, another large grade. I mean, if, if our kindergarten, if our, if we get ten more registrants for kindergarten, then, uh, I may have to, we may have to rethink.
Right. And so the kindergarten teacher, one of those kindergarten teachers has become a first grade teacher, and then you hired a first grade teacher, it looks like, um, from your email, for the other first grade position. Is that true, my understanding of that?
The current first grade teacher for this year is not returning.
Right.
The current second grade teacher from this year is not returning.
Right.
So one of the kindergarten teachers, uh, they met with Mr. Andrews and they had a conversation. One of those current kindergarten teachers is moving to first. A new hire will be the second. The, the other, uh, first grade teacher, and a new hire is the second grade teacher. And Conrad has been hired permanently as the fourth grade teacher.
Okay.
Okay. Superintendent Parentazi, and Madam Chair, if I may add some more information to, uh, member Sherlock's comment, I believe that fourth grade updated with information that we had available within the last week could be decreased by two. So I, I believe if we really wanna get close to that new fourth grade size, it'll be closer to fourteen, um, for the coming school year. Does that answer some of your questions, Ms. Sherlock?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank, thank you.
I may answer the question, but I'm not happy about that.
No, I know. I'd love it to be the sixteen, but yeah. Well, I think the sixth grade is actually gonna be a little bigger from what I heard. Uh, there was a couple of students that are returning.
Uh, there was a couple of students that are returning to the job.
I, I heard that that is a possibility also.
So.
I should say, this is, this is projected as of, uh, the end of school last Friday, um, without final transfers completed. And we'll have, we'll have an update in August.
Sounds great. But I'll keep going and see here as we have.
July, rather.
Class sizes and just with the need for the two first grades. That's great to see.
And the kindergarten, um, and pre-K is based upon the enrollment number? Or, um, like it's kindergarten, is that number based upon who is in, you know, you know, eligible per the census?
Now, we survey the parents. We, we get, we get all of the students of the appropriate age group from, um, from the census and we actually send them envelopes.
To them.
And then we ask the preschool, uh, students who are old enough to go to kindergarten, what they're going to, not, we don't ask the students. We ask the parents of the, uh, preschool students who are old enough to go to kindergarten, what, what their plans are.
Great.
Okay.
Class than I thought. Um.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parentozzi. Mr. Andrews, would you like to give your report, please?
I'd be happy to. We close the school year out in a real positive way by continuing the tradition of, uh, Field Day. And I really want to emphasize that it's, it's a unique, uh, day at the school for our school, I think, because the way that it's been done over the years. And this is a, a multi-age team organization. Uh, it really is a nice community building day. Uh, it's fun, engaging, but also it really builds a bond between the different grade levels, I believe, and the different staff members. Cause everyone really comes together to make it special. Uh, and it's, it mixes all the grades. So it's, it's unlike anything I've ever seen at a school. Uh, and I, I think it's a wonderful tradition. And I just want to thank Roxanne Shenna, Camilla Brett, Allison Palito and the entire staff for really coming together and making it special for the students and the school as a whole. I think it was something that we were really looking forward to this year, especially given the, um, circumstances that we were working under. And it was a real nice way to close the school year out.
And thanks to the members of the school committee who helped during that day and the parents and guardians. We had more, we had more volunteers than, than we really knew what to do with. I noticed, uh, there were a lot of, uh, water breaks being taken, which is good because it was a hot day.
And it's a great chance for, uh, uh, parents to connect too. Parents, staff, everybody really to work together to make it special for the kids. So.
It's good to be out of campus this year and really kind of be there with everyone. It was a nice opportunity after a really different year. And I, I think, oh my gosh, Roxanne and Miss Brett and every, Miss Palito, they were unbelievable. What a great job they did organizing. The kids didn't even realize that there weren't bouncy houses. They're having so much fun. It was so great.
Absolutely. And but this year felt a little extra special. And, um, yeah, Miss Brett and, um, Michelle did a great job putting it, everybody did, just putting it all together. It was a good celebration for the end of the school year. So thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, I've been talking to the teachers about the new guidelines. We're really excited to not have to wear masks because it has impacted communication, um, intelligibility of students and staff. And so I think that just not having to wear masks is going to really help, um, our educational program. And also the distancing is going to help because teachers, um, can return to a more typical setting for their class in terms of groupings, furniture and, uh, classes that will get back a classroom, including STEM, art and music. So those classrooms will, um, return to what is more typical for the, uh, students and staff. And I think it'll be make it more comfortable, uh, for everybody and, um, and make the lessons, you know, improve the lessons really. Uh, as Superintendent Parentozzi said, the, the Back to School Academy is enrolling. Uh, the last link I sent out was in the newsletter and also on the weekend. And so we currently have two classes planned, uh, for the week of that academy, which is August sixteenth to twentieth, eight-thirty to twelve-thirty. The goal is really to have small groups of students targeting their specific needs and also including enriching activities and, uh, in rigor. And I, I think it's going to be a great week that the students really appreciate and getting excited about the school year and then have a week off. And then we start school back. So I, I think we timed it well. And I'm looking forward to having a couple of, uh, familiar faces working in the program and students back to take part in it. Uh, in terms of teaching and learning, we've really been focused on new hires, looking at some new teachers to bring on to, onboard, which the superintendent will talk about in his report. And I also wanted to follow up on bike safety. Uh, I was able to get in touch with Safe Roots to School and they're excited about offering some bike safety programming for us in the fall. Uh, I know students are, uh, really, uh, using their bicycles a lot more to come to school. We're glad to see that and we're able to offer this, uh, for them in the fall. So we're putting the program together, perhaps connected to physical education, uh, or another part of their schedule. Finally, I wanted to just say a big thanks to the PTO this year. Um, we have a couple of, uh, executives that are moving on, including Nella Raffielli and Sherri Soleimani. They've done a great job over their tenure as members of the PTO. And we have some new members of the executive board that I would like to announce briefly. And those are Erin Flaherty and Melissa Hussey, the co-presidents. Alex Kent will be serving as vice president and Angie Martin and Leona Delloyd will be secretaries. The PTO really makes the school a place that students, uh, look forward to coming to. Staff do that as well, but I think this adds the, um, this adds the social piece for students and the, the things that they really can look forward to on, in, in a different way than they do with the typical classes. Uh, they are always happy to come to school, but the PTO is able to offer pieces that the school doesn't typically offer. And it's really appreciated and it's, I'm so glad that, uh, so many parents have stepped up this year to be new members of the executive board and I look forward to supporting them in their roles.
That's wonderful. It's wonderful that they are going to be co-presidents and co-secretaries too. It's even more people really firmly committed to the board and it's fantastic. But thank, thank you for all their generosity. It's great.
Absolutely. On June sixteenth, we had our sixth grade graduation and high school awards at the country club. That was special. Uh, we hadn't had that there before. And this year we were working with the new guidelines and trying to plan ahead. And so I want to say a thank you to the sixth grade parents who got that together. Yeah, their friends and colleagues who also helped decorate the area. It was a wonderful ceremony. So many people said that they really enjoyed the setting. And I think that just having it in that setting really, um, lent a nice, um, grace to the, the whole ceremony. So thanks to the parents and, uh, all the folks who got that together for the school year.
Is there any discussion about having it there moving forward? It was a really nice night. Obviously it's dicey with the weather, having it outdoors, but it was really a beautiful night.
I agree. I'd, I'd be happy to discuss it with the, um, the new sixth grade class, um, in the coming school year. June eighteenth, we had our closing ceremony and we celebrated a number of things. First, we recognized that it was Juneteenth, uh, which is the first time we've been really recognizing in the nation as a whole, the holiday for the end of slavery. And so we spoke briefly about that on the closing ceremony at, um, on the last day of school. We also recognized the retirement of Chief Dwyer. And Ashley Sherlock, um, was selected by the president of the student council to provide some remarks uh, on his tenure at the school and, and the community and what he's offered. And she did a lovely job and the students presented him with a card of thanks that they put together on Field Day. And then we had the flag lowering ceremony. And, uh, and that closed out our school year in, in a nice, uh, typical way. And I, I think students were happy to have succeeded throughout the school year. And, you know, I think that all things considered, we really ended on a, on a nice note. And then just a quick note on facility, uh, several classrooms will be moving this summer. The first grade, two first grade classes, classrooms will be set up. Second grade will move, fourth grade and fifth grade will move. So that'll go reset a bit to how things had been in the past because we don't need to keep the distance. And I think that'll really, uh, improve, you know, things for all the students and the staff. The new first grade teachers will be sharing a door between them until they'll be able to collaborate. And the art, music and STEM teachers will re, re, regain classroom spaces. Uh, they had lost their classroom spaces to allow for students to be distanced. And they're looking forward to not have to travel or teach in the cafeteria, which we expect to be used, uh, for food service in the coming school year. Also, the computer lab, um, will no longer be, now that every student in gate grades one through six has a Chromebook and the kindergarteners will have iPads to use. Um, we're not predicting a cha, a need for large computer labs. So that will be converted to an upper grades book room where students can, um, go and select a, a book, a novel from a classroom library that will be shared between the upper grades or also, uh, take assessments or use a large screen computer because we do have these, um, lovely IMAX still available. And those will be available more in a pod format rather than a, uh, a lab format. So throughout the building, there'll be sets of six or so, uh, IMAX where students might want to use a different type of computer for a specific task. And that concludes my principal's report.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
My pleasure.
Um, Mr. Parentozzi, would you like to move along with the new business, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, Madam Chair, with your, um, permission, I will le, I will read the items. And, uh, I believe our secretary can simply cut and paste rather than having to type all these thousands of numbers. So, uh, what you have before you is thirty-three thousand fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents of internal transfers. As a reminder, this isn't using up our, the reserve. This is simply taking money from column A and putting it into column B. So it really has no impact on the bottom line. One of the more interesting thing is, for example, the fourth one, we added money into the substitute, uh, line. But then now we had more than we needed at the end of the year. So we're now taking it and putting it into, uh, the salary line. Uh, so, um, it's that balancing that keeps, not only the bottom line has to be in the black, bottom right, as the accountant say, but each of the specific lines have to be in the black or zeroed out. So that's what this does. So, Madam Chair, from, uh, we're going to transfer two thousand two hundred and forty dollars from school committee legal expenses to superintendent's office salaries. We're going to transfer, or I, excuse me, I'm requesting for a, a transfer of three thousand five hundred and three dollars and forty-four cents for maintenance of equipment to the superintendent office salaries. Uh, transfer of three hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty cents from the superintendent's office supplies to the superintendent's office services. A transfer of nine hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy-two cents from the substitute account to the principal office salary account. A transfer of six thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-five cents from special education teacher salaries to teacher salaries, regular education. A transfer of nine thousand sixty-six dollars and eighty cents from special education teacher salaries to special education aides salaries. A transfer of one thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars from special education teacher salaries to teacher longevity. A transfer of five thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars and twelve cents from the heating and gas line to utilities electric line. A transfer of four hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety, ninety-six cents from the tutoring line to the special education supply line. A transfer of five hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-nine cents from evaluations to health supplies and a transfer of two thousand six hundred dollars from technology services to software. And Madam Chair, the appropriate account numbers are listed for each of those transfers.
Can I ask two questions? Just because this is new to me. Um, how would, how would all of the things that are being covered with the transfer of costs have been covered if the other funds weren't available to transfer?
Madam Chair, that's a phenomenal question. I'm going to give two answers. Number one is that in my many years as a superintendent, that has never happened to me.
Okay. It always works out.
It always, there's always a, an account where you overestimated. It's a, you know, you use more electricity, but it's a warm winter or it's a cold winter and you use less of, you know, um, some of this, um, and then the failsafe is if we, if I suspected a month and month and a half ago that we weren't going to make it, I would have asked the, uh, what does Leckman for a reserve fund transfer? We've built up a lot of goodwill in the community by year after year since I've been here, putting money into the reserve fund. So if we ever, if the school district ever reached a point where there, you know, five special education students who all need transportation move in, in October and we are not going to be able to have enough money to, um, to, to balance our budget, then we have the reserve fund. And over the last few years, we've, we've put in a, almost a half a million, uh, you know, almost a half a million dollars into the reserve fund. So that's, that's technically how it would happen. For example, the uniform services departments, uh, do ask for reserves fund transfers on a semi-regular basis. Uh, we've been lucky. Uh, retirements help. But, uh, frankly, we're kind of at the end of that string that, uh, we're not going to have a, a retirement, uh, breakage, it's called. The, the typical retiree leaves at about a ninety thousand dollar salary. The typical replacement is hired at typically a fifty, fifty-five thousand dollar salary. So that breakage is used to, to, uh, balance the budget or to create reserve. We're both.
Thanks. And then my other question is, um, what does Michelle need to document? Or like for the, um, motion to be made? Is it just one motion to approve the transfers as listed?
That's what I thought.
Uh, ma- Madam Chair, the simplest way, the, the way I've always done this is I quickly read them as I just did.
Okay.
And the secretary will cut and paste this document and put it right or attach it right to the minutes. And then we will take care of, of forwarding this to the, uh, town accountant so that all the appropriate, line items are correctly, uh, accounted for. Uh, the, the school committee secretary doesn't have to do anything other than the minutes.
Um, Tony, for, for the agenda item, it's in your email that it's item eight, A, but I didn't see it on the actual document that it was labeled as eight A. So I just want to make sure that that.
Michelle, it's on the bottom of the sheet, like on the.
Oh, okay. Okay. Then never mind.
That's okay.
And that could just be forwarded with the minutes.
If that's the biggest mistake I make today, I'm, I'm having a good day.
Yeah.
So Madam Chair, um, the motion would be to transfer thirty-three thousand fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents as detailed by the motion that I read.
Okay. I'll make a motion to appro, approve the transfer request in the total amount of thirty-three thousand fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents as detailed in the report by Mr. Parentozzi or meeting June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one.
And I second that motion.
Thanks, Ms. Karas. Any discussion?
That looks appropriate. And thank you for all your planning, Tony.
You're very welcome. Um, Madam Secretary, if it's easier, we can just attach this to the minutes too. Whichever one is easiest for you.
Yes, please. I think just attach it. Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Seeing no further discussion, um, by a show of hands, uh, all in favor. All right, seeing no further discussion, by show of hands, all in favor of approving the transfers as outlined, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Sherlock, Ms. Karas, Ms. Stam, and myself. And the motion passes. And Mr. Parentazzi, before you go on with the next item, I realized right as you started talking that the next agenda item was actually community correspondence. And I skipped over it after the principal's report. So if you don't mind, we'll just briefly go back to community correspondence before you go on with the new business. So at this point in the meeting, I invite anybody who is in the community that would like to make a comment to please type your name and address into the chat function, which should be open, yeah. And while we're waiting to see if anybody has any comments, have any members of the school committee had any correspondence that they would like to share at tonight's meeting? Miss Hughes, none?
I just have a question as a community member. So we have two Chromebooks and I didn't, I didn't remember to give them back at the end of the school. So is there going to be a collection or the kids going to keep them for next year?
Great, great question. If I may take that, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to. We had sent out emails for a request for students to return Chromebooks and parents have been doing that. However, in our haste to get them out to students who need them, we may not have recorded your name. And I'm not certain, but if you would be able to email, email you the address of the person who can help you with that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Andrews, didn't we, didn't we agree that the fine for not returning them before the end of the school was going to be two hundred dollars?
Yeah, well, I didn't get, I didn't get a notice.
Okay. Then if you don't get a notice, Mr. Andrews pays it.
That's right.
You know, that's what, that's how my world works, you know?
Right. Now that's. Yeah, we were, you know, we must have lent it without having a, you know, having the information written down. So if you return them, that'd be great and I'll let Mr. Lockwood know.
Okay.
Thanks for mentioning it.
No problem.
All right, seeing no comments in the chat function, Mr. Parentazzi, we can move on with new business and the before-school lunch bunch and after-school program updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Because of the commissioner's missive, we are going to restart all of our programs. Before-school program is all set. We have a staff member ready to do that. The lunch bunch will be all set. We will have our power professional who helps out with the pre-K program take care of that. Unfortunately, the after-school program, at this point, I have absolutely no one interested in doing the program. Obviously, we will continue to search, but I did want you to know that at this time it is not possible to staff that program. We will continue to advertise and to talk to community members about it.
Now, is that always been staffed by somebody that has another, an additional role within the school? Or is it sometimes staffed by somebody that, you know, doesn't otherwise have a position within the school?
Both.
Right.
Okay, when I got here, there was an actual, a director. And that person resigned. The principal actually runs the program as we now have it for a stipend. It was extraordinarily efficient for us. We were paying a director twenty-five thousand dollars plus a family medical insurance plan to run the after-school program. Whereas for several thousand dollar stipend, the principal takes care of it. The staff, when, for the first couple of years that Mr. Andrews and I were here, were all internal. And then we were able to hire a retired teacher who supervised the program under the direction of Mr. Andrews for one year before, or one year and a half before it came to a halt because of COVID nineteen. So right now, we don't have anybody. I've posted it and reposted it. But we'll be going outside for people out in the community.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I wonder if it would be worthwhile to maybe even post on some of the community, you know, websites. I'm sure somebody in the hunt would be really happy to, you know, fill that position. If it didn't, I just didn't know if it had to be somebody that's already otherwise working in the school.
No, the person has to be fingerprinted, queried. They have to go through a first aid course. And that's it. And obviously be of sound mind and character. So I couldn't do it.
Is there, is there a posting that you could forward on to us that, you know, we could
Absolutely.
Maybe post, is it, is it being posted externally now? So we could go ahead and do that? Or maybe, Mr. Andrews, when you're ready to post it externally? Just because there's Nahat resident pages and things like that.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put it on the town website. We'll, you know, we'll, we'll get it out there. I just made myself a note. Madam Chair, eight C, as the members of the committee, committee know.
Sorry, Mr. Parentazzi, I just have one more question. I'm sorry. About the before-school and lunch bunch program. So if people went onto the Johnson School website right now, would they be able to sign up for? Anything, remember how we set out that if you pre-signed up for lunch bunch, for example, as opposed to being in a drop-in rate, which it's historically been? So are those things posted for people that are interested or just not yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
But we do want in the future lunch bunch to be pre-signed. You're absolutely right. And we also, if we do run the after-school program, we would like that to be more of a pre-signed than a drop-in.
Right.
Because drop-ins cause all kinds of staffing issues. You know, one day you have seven kids you didn't know you were going to have the day before. And, you know, we, the last thing we want is it to be unhealthy or in any way not in the best interest of these, these students.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is because I was enrolling my soon-to-be kindergartner online. And it had the option, because I was registering her to sign. It looked like it had an option to click on to sign up for after-school. I don't know if that's something that you could disable because I think it reflected the tuition for previous years. So if it's not reflecting what we're going to be enrolling for this year, it might be good to just disable that link online so people don't get confused. And also. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do that immediately, actually.
Updating a schedule would be important, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Madam Chair, I'll move on.
Yes, please.
As the members of the committee know that there is an agreement with the Nahat Teachers Association and the school committee to roll for one additional year the current contract with a two percent increase with the provisions of each teacher will add a commentary of substantive information regarding each subject on each report card. And we will begin negotiations on September fifteenth. And the document, the copy of a document in your packet is fully endorsed by the chair and by the president of the NTA. And then the last thing on new business is the open meeting law. This is actually from the these, the actual state website, mass.gov, as you can see. And the governor did sign the Act extending certain COVID nineteen measures, including the fact that remote meeting provisions can, are in effect until April first, two thousand twenty-two. It is the, at the school committee's discretion whether or not to continue virtual or to go live. And I await your determination.
Gina? What's that? No, I was wondering if, I don't think there's been any movement from the town hall in terms of, you know, our access to be able to have the technology to support community participation remotely. You know, we went back to having meetings in the town hall. So that's something to consider. Whereas I feel like there's better participation over the, you know, the video. And we've been, other than signing bills in person, I feel like we've been pretty efficient over video, you know, for meetings.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Mr. Andrews and I have both made overtures at town hall. The best we can do is the following. There is new equipment in place. We're not sure it's hooked up and no one's been trained. Is that about it in a nutshell, Mr. Andrews? Yeah. So until further notice, I recommend that we continue to do it the way we are until we can figure out how to do it better.
Yeah, I stopped by the town hall maybe two weeks ago and I had a similar message that, you know, they would be able to record the meeting as long as we're in the main, you know, meeting hall. But community participation would only be if people came in person. I don't know if other school committee members have, you know, thoughts on reasons that we should, you know, move quick, more quickly to in-person meetings.
I personally feel torn. I feel like, I really think it's more equitable for community members to have it with a Zoom format and ability to participate remotely if needed for any variety of reasons. But on the flip side, there is something nice to humans meeting in person. And I know that that's less tangible, but I think it's real too. So I'm happy to be patient and, you know, wait for technology to be usable or to utilize Zoom. I do think if we have the opportunity to really think about it, that that's ideal. But there's a piece of me that's looking forward to being in person. That's, you know, I think this is much easier to walk into my study and hop on with you guys as much easier as a committee member. But on the flip side, there's something real to being together and being able to get through things. So I don't know how everyone else feels. I'm happy to wait if that's what's best. I'm happy to wait for Zoom to be on.
It doesn't necessarily have to be Zoom, just another, you know, technology platform so that there's more community participation and access.
I mean, the past couple of meetings that I have been at, there really hasn't been community participation. So, you know, I don't know. I do, and I live right across the street from town hall too, so I could just walk right over there. So it's no big deal to me either way. But, you know, if that's the thing that we're hanging our head on, I don't know that it's really something that we need to consider since that participation has been minimal.
It's not like there's a huge group of people that have been needing more.
The precedent tradition has been that people come in person to town meetings. You know, whether it be selectmen or whatever kind of meeting it is, that's been the precedent that's set. I think the only thing to kind of pause and consider is in the age of technology, you know, with things being as they are, people who have handicaps have, you know, childcare issues and then can't participate as easily could be omitted. And you're right, people don't typically come to school committee meetings. We don't, we don't generally draw a crowd. That's definitely my experience. However, that doesn't mean, you know, if at any given moment, someone who has a hard time getting there may have something that they want to say or do. If we can make that possible, I think that's really important to at least be working on. Even if we decide to go back in person before, it's actionable. I think we should have an action plan, you know, to get that going. Just because I think it's going to be recognized going forward.
I can continue to follow up at the town hall. I'm sure that now that, you know, there's no more restrictions. Other groups are going to be looking to meet in person. And they may be, you know, having similar discussions on how to improve access for community participation. So I don't know, as a committee, how we feel about, you know, leaving it as it's through the summer and seeing if, you know, readdressing as the year starts, might be a good timeframe. Give us enough time to see if there's any changes.
Yeah, no, I'm okay with that, Gina, and reassessing in the fall. My preference personally is to meet in person. I think things do get lost over Zoom. And personally, I'm burnt out with Zoom meeting. But it makes sense, you know, for the summer, for us to continue this way and then reassess where we are in the fall.
I, I feel similarly about being burnt out on Zoom most of my life is on Zoom still. And look forward to seeing people in person. And I'm not going to lie, I've enjoyed the convenience of Zoom and the access that there are some folks that have engaged in different ways in my professional life that never engaged before, that have been able to, you know, use Zoom to do that. And I don't know, part of me kind of looks at it this way is that after this is said and done, which looks like now it's April, we're never having this opportunity again. Doesn't matter what's happening at the town hall, right? Whether they have technology, don't have technology, you know, the open meeting law comes back, that's it. You know, we're done. So there's a piece of me that's kind of like, use it while you have it because it's never going to happen in our lifetime. And I hope, for these reasons anyway. And, and so, you know, I'm not, I know that the in-person days, you know, will come. And I remember when that felt heavy. I think there's a part of me that, you know, in fact, it makes it easier to fully engage when you know that you can shut it off and, you know, I can go say goodbye to my, my little guy. And upstairs. And I think that the access for other folks, like you were just saying about folks that had physical challenges or, you know, childcare issues or whatnot, to be able to engage if they want to is important. And then the other thing is that Tony just said, you know, it kind of gave a recommendation to continue on like this for a little while. So I think it matters for you, for you and for Mr. Andrews, like how you feel in this short window of time, right? Before the world evolves again. And it would, and like, if that's not the will of the committee, I also like will be the first person to say yay and bring muffins and be happy to be with you all personally. Patty and I were just talking about that when we ran into each other at the beach last weekend. So I do feel that way. So I go either way, but I have enjoyed the convenience of this and it won't be there forever.
So everybody, does anybody feel strongly that we should start meeting in person now? Or is everybody comfortable with sort of re-discussing this in the fall and going from there? Okay, do we have to vote on that, Mr. Parentazzi?
No, Madam Chair, I don't believe so. The methodology of meetings are totally at your discretion.
Okay. And, you know, there was a minute that I was thinking to myself, do we do one meeting a month in person and one over Zoom? But I just feel like that would be really confusing and who would forget where they need to be, so.
The only, the only thing I want to say, Madam Chair, is until we get this technology thing at town hall straightened out, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to inconvenience the members of the school committee to go to a place where you to inconvenience the members of the school committee to go to a place where you cannot communicate with your constituents. And we had a lot of that. I mean, I'm sure Mrs. Sherlock remembers that we'd be there and the technology wouldn't work. So nobody knew what was going on in the community, whereas if somebody did want to find out what was going on at the school committee meeting, if we were on Zoom, at least they, they can do that. And I'd say most people now know how to do Zoom. You know, it's, it's pretty common. So I just wouldn't see the rationale for the members of the committee going to town hall, the technology doesn't work, where you could have stayed home and broadcasted. So.
Because full disclosure, even, so that we're entirely clear, the way it is right now that with the new technology, we can't even broadcast it, let alone have two-way communication. Before COVID, you could broadcast it, but if people wanted to communicate with the school committee, they had to come to the town hall. Because there's new technology and not somebody trained and being able to hook it up and broadcast it, we wouldn't be able to do anything. We would just be meeting as a group, and whoever wanted to participate, whether it be to listen or participate, would have to come down to the town hall.
That's correct. At this time.
So that's why.
No go.
Right. And that's why it seems to make sense to wait a little bit longer. And hopefully the technology will be as such that not only can people, you know, listen in on the school committee meeting, but they could potentially participate if the technology allows.
Madam Chair, it's my guess, it's kind of like the thermostat in my house. The technology is much more capable than the.
User. Yeah, than the user. That's fair. Okay. All right. So we'll continue to meet via Zoom through the summer, and I'll continue to follow up, stopping by the town hall occasionally to see what the updates are there on the technology. I have that on my radar.
And I have a note to myself to also follow up. So we can both follow up. Thank you.
Um, yeah, okay. Mr. Parentozzi, would you like to review personnel matters?
I would love to inform the members of our community on a very positive personnel report. First of all, in your packet, you have the redacted resume of one Lydia Antrim. Ms. Antrim is a former rep, member of our school community as a student, and you can see that she has a master's degree, and she is an elementary teacher with special education background. I do want to thank the interview teams that have met to interview at least three of our new staff members. Without the broad constituent involvement in an interview team, it would basically be one individual or two individuals' opinions. And I know Mr. Andrews and I value highly the opinion of the interviews teams. Ms. Antrim was the first choice of the interview team after the person who was slightly ahead of her was already hired. So we got a twofer on that one. And then at six fifteen this evening, I received an email confirming and accepting an appointment that I offered an individual at approximately two o'clock this afternoon. Gabrielle Raymond, her redacted resume was sent to you under a separate cover because I didn't send it to you till I had it, till I had the appointment letter signed. Gabrielle is a, also has a master's degree, and in elementary education, she has taught in New Hampshire and has interned in New Hampshire and has also tutored. And we, once again, Ms. Raymond was the number one choice of the interview team who interviewed for that position. So right now, the, we have three vacancies that actually, only two of them are real vacancies. Number one is our part-time art position, one day a week, teaching art. The second is the after-school program supervisors, which you talked about earlier, and we're looking for substitute custodians. And the community, the teachers, the staff, the parents, guardians, and Mr. Andrews did a great job of moving forward quickly this year and early. And in the opinion of many people, we have had a really good hiring season. The recommendations that the individuals who are coming to us for the first time bring with them are truly extraordinary. So we're very pleased.
We have Mr. Lohr in fourth grade. And then which, which of the grades did these two fall into? I'm sorry. Which one?
Second.
That's okay. Ms. Antrim is.
Yeah.
Second grade. Ms. Raymond is first grade, and Mr. Lohr is fourth grade.
Great. Thank you. Wonderful.
Great. Isn't busy. Is there any business from the school committee? I don't think I have any business. Would anybody, seeing no further discussion, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn into executive session? To conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with union personnel and to approve the executive session minutes from June eighth of two thousand twenty-one. And we will not reconvene to open session.
I'll make the motion to adjourn into executive session, enter into executive session, not to reconvene to open session, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, and for approval of executive session minutes from June eighth, two thousand twenty-one, that be a motion to do so at eight twelve P M.
Can I have a second?
No, second, Beth.
All in favor of adjourning to the executive session? Ms. Anderson, Ms. Karas, Ms. Stam, Ms. Sherlock, and myself. Thank you for anybody that joined the meeting. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Sorry, I keep mute myself so you guys don't hear my taping.
Yeah. Efficient.
Yeah.
Thanks for.
Mrs. Tibbo said, thank you and good night. In the chat room.
I see it. Thanks. Oh, and I'm gonna stop recording.